Areas around curriculum, special education, pupil personnel, instructional technology, general instruction, and then we're going to answer questions that the board might have. So, Brian, would you start us off, please?
Thank you, sure. First area I'd like to go over is a little refresher on the tax levy limit for the district. Let's pull it right up here. Our first technical difficulty of the evening. There we go. What I have is a comparison between our fourteen fifteen formula and our fifteen sixteen formula to go through for everybody. All the different steps. So we start, our base is what our current levy is for fourteen fifteen is our starting point for fifteen sixteen. Next, we multiply by our growth factor of 2.18 percent. This is by far the highest growth factor in the county. The next closest in Monroe County is actually Rush Henrietta at 1.6. If you look regionally, Victor would be at a 1.9 as a comparison for growth. So we are by far and away growing as a tax base faster than anybody in Monroe County.
Is it residential or business?
It's a combination. They use multiple factors. So you can see the difference between the two years, what that growth factor does for us as increasing our ability to go out. You know, it's a significant difference to start. Our pilots are remaining stable, so once we add it all up, here's our subtotal before we get to our capital tax levy. We subtract that, and what the capital tax levy is really just the difference between what we borrow for buses and our buildings, subtracting out the aid that we get for building aid and transportation aid in those areas. So all that is, is what we've liked to call the local share for our debt service. Then we multiply by the growth factor, which is usually what everybody refers to as our CPI. This year it's 1.62 percent as compared to 1.46 percent last year. That's actually a difference for us of a little over $200,000 compared to that growth from last year. So there's another addition to it that could raise our cap higher than last year. Then we take the pilots we're expecting next year, back those out, you add them at the top, subtract them at the bottom, so you get your subtotal of your property tax levy limit before exclusions. This is what everybody often refers to as the tax levy limit. When you think tax levy limit, this is what the benchmark is before exclusions. Now our projected exclusions for next year, about $2.2 million. Once again, that's just our projected difference between what we're borrowing for our buildings and for our buses versus what the aid we can expect to get back. Nothing gets added for our pension contribution because none of the pension increases are over 2 percent, so that stays at zero. So our tax levy limit plus exclusions is $97,732,689. It's a 4.01 percent increase. Just want to take a second to explain a minor difference right here for the capital levy. Contingent on that, the formula expressly says we have to use the building aid from the governor's run. We do not have that. The best we can do is a projection. For this exercise, for this formula, I have taken the best possible case scenario for building aid, the highest possible number we can get. So that way our cap is not overinflated. It is actually intentionally underinflated for what I expect us to get, but I did not want to be in the scenario where if we went to our cap and we get runs after we submit our property tax report card, it now looks like we are over because we've finally gotten that building aid number that the state is promising us versus what we are estimating or projecting. So this is a little bit different than what has been shown at budget advisory councils and committees before. We were at 4.4 earlier in the process. This is the reason why, because I've intentionally done that to protect us down the road, given the uncertainty that's surrounding everything that's going on.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
Just the question that last time you did use a figure that was lower than our currently municipal rates because the expectation is that that formula will change. So is that what you meant by best case scenario?
Correct. The actual numbers are, for our building aid is, what could possibly be, given if we hit all our time factors for benchmarking with our state aid reports and the project that's going on, our emergency project, we could possibly at max get $6.3 million in building aid. But what I actually think's going to happen is lower than that. So if I plugged in the lower number of, say, 6.2, it makes this number, this 2.2, higher. So it goes up, so then in essence, this number would go higher. Because the delta between our local share and the aid increases.
So for the sake of argument, I mean, suppose we don't get the numbers and school districts are put in a position where they have to guess, and they guess incorrectly, and they go out for a vote and they think they've passed, but then all of a sudden they need to have a supermajority. I mean...
Right, and that's why I've gone with the highest possible number we possibly could have.
Right, so you, and is that the philosophy that...
I believe that many, many other districts are taking.
All right.
So long-term impact if we go below the cap. What I've done is taken our fifteen sixteen cap number and run a hypothetical of what if we decide to go to 3 percent instead of the four point, to the max. So right here you have your levy at the cap that we could go to, but if we decided to just go 3 percent, what's the difference? What's going to happen? For us, that would be leaving $953,000 on the table. Now, projecting forward, what does that do every year as you go on and on? So what I've done is for the preceding next four years, kept our growth at 2 percent, kept the CPI at 1.62, and kept our pilots and building aid stable. So all the variables, nothing changes, it all stays the same. So we could look at this in just that small little window of what happens in this one instance. So if you look ahead, if we kept at the cap, we could go to 101. Figure it'd be at 3.63 percent with all those factors. We went out at a hypothetical right to that. Here's what the cap would have been, but because you go out at 3 percent in fifteen sixteen, this is the most you could do that year, and so on and so forth. So every year, because of the growth, that levy difference becomes a little bit greater by that increase. And then it accumulates. So after two years, you've lost 1.9. After three years, it's 2.9, so on and so forth, till the final five-year total accumulated loss is a little over $5 million.
And that's only if you do it one year?
That's only if you do it one year. If you, then sixteen seventeen came and you went below it again, then, you know, it stunts what you could do even further.
The confusing thing right now is we're talking about a tax cap, we're not talking about the tax rate.
Correct.
And that's where the confusion comes in. Because I don't want people to think that we're going to charge them 4 percent more next year on their individual taxes. You're explaining to us why it is smart to go to cap, but this is not explaining to the homeowner what they're paying in taxes.
Correct. It doesn't, valuation of the district as a whole has more of an impact on tax rates than what our tax levy increase would be.
And once again, it's smart to go up to the tax cap because if we don't, in the long run, we are actually losing money.
Correct.
Kind of over the gap elimination concept along.
Right, yeah, once you lose it, you can't get it back.
Yeah, it limits your ability to...
Okay, I just want to be clear on that.
Everyone good?
Yeah. So one year below the cap has compounding impact in future years. Originally, when the law was signed, they had the carryover provision. What did that mean exactly? There is no carryover in essence anymore. They cleared up a technicality in the way the calculation was handed, so that difference that we had of 953,000 if we so decided, you can't carry that over and add it to the following year. They've changed the nuance of the formula to pretty much eliminate that. The only districts that in essence are able to carry over anything are those that have a defeated budget and would revert back to what they had the previous year. The Comptroller warned municipalities that being below the property tax cap will have long-term ramifications, should be reviewed carefully, and it does adversely affect districts that are more reliant on local levies for income rather than state aid, which would be districts such as us, where the levy is a greater revenue generator than our state aid.
So this is the Comptroller that's telling us?
Yes, this is. Rural Schools did a study, the inverse relation between as the state aid goes up, the rate of increase for property tax levies goes down and vice versa. That's all, you know, it's all tied together. I think it's important to know too, we're in, you know, this is very uncertain right now with not having a budget. There's, you know, tax proceedings that are constantly going on. We don't know what the ramifications of those would be to the district. So this, we know, this is the one definitive that we know as a district and we can count on and are not guessing on as far as a revenue source right now. So what does going to the cap do to the tax rate? I think the very first thing we need to do is look at property valuation because that's the greatest decider of our tax rate, what's going on across the district. Right now what we have is several averages. I've put fourteen fifteen. What did the property valuation do this year? Penfield was an anomaly for last year, at a seven, a little over 7 percent growth for their valuation. Webster just under 1, Ontario had a loss, and Walworth a slight uptick over 1. So I wanted to look at all the statistical analysis. What's a 25-year average look like? What's the 25-year median look like? What's the five-year average look like? And what's the 10-year average look like? To give you guys the best information, the best possible, for the best possible decisions right now. So I've run these statistics for you. If you look ahead, okay, what would that do to the rate then going out? Now, we're assuming the same equalization rates for the towns. Those haven't changed. Penfield's 100, Webster's at 90, Ontario and Walworth are also at 100. So I've highlighted the five-year average, 10-year average, and the same growth as last year. Going out at 4 percent, this is the gamut of what could possibly happen, and I'll focus on the true value increase. I believe that what's honestly going to happen is somewhere between those numbers, somewhere between the five and 10-year average. Right now, March is when the assessors are still gathering all their information, processing the STAR applications, and so really probably couldn't get a closer figure to what's going to happen till later in April. So the best determining is we have a slew of data and using that to our advantage to try to predict what's going to happen. Once again, why I highlight it is because the truth is somewhere in those last three columns of what's going to happen for the district. I don't see our 25-year average, even though it's a longer scope of data, I don't see our 25-year average coming through for us or the 25-year median. Over that amount of time, obviously, everybody that's been here has realized, past 25 years what's happened, it's been exponential off-the-charts growth. And the smaller timeframe is actually more pertinent to us, I think, than a longer timeframe when it comes to this.
Questions?
Any questions?
No. All set?
So I've also included for you, what does that look like for the tax bills for those areas using our median property value of $169,000? What do those rates translate into a tax bill? We'll tell you STAR's not taken into consideration on this. This is just straight rate times assessed value. STAR is now played into this. I just wanted you to have those numbers as a benchmark and a real dollar figure to look at. And you'll see why coming up in a couple slides, why I did not include STAR in the So when you subtract the two, what's the difference? Still on that same median household, what do we look like as far as yearly increase on the median household price? So you see the five-year average for the true value is 96.87, 10-year average is 51.19, and if we experience the same exact growth as last year, it's 48.51 on a yearly basis difference between predicting for 1516 and this year 1415. Once again, STAR not taken into account with any of the calculations.
Supervision?
No, that's just the difference between the bills. So why did I not put STAR in? Because there's some possible STAR changes coming. First, STAR was capped at 2 percent growth in 1112. I think that message still has not gotten out to a lot of people. So if your STAR for a basic, your STAR exemption was a $500 savings, after that, the most it could grow per year was 2 percent, so you could get 510 the next year. It did not grow with all the other factors. It was capped at 2 percent. There are some additional changes that are being proposed in this year's budget. Cap STAR rebate at the current levels, so what you saw in your tax bill this year, that's what you would get going forward. It would not increase no matter what was happening. Your basic or your enhanced would stay at the level it is now. The second one would be changing STAR from a deduction of the school tax bill to a refundable income tax credit. So that would change over time as a property would be sold. So if you had STAR on your house, you moved, you just lost it because you would not get it on your new house, vice versa. If you wanted to downsize to a smaller home and you were a senior with enhanced STAR, you just lost your enhanced STAR off your property tax bill.
And then you can write it off your income tax.
Correct, right. What they're doing is changing it to a refundable income tax credit. So for us, STAR would be frozen at these levels right now. This is what's on the books for 1415, what your basic and enhanced are by what municipality you're living in within the district. What that would do would add an estimated $26 in taxes to a homeowner's bill for enhanced and 13 for basic. It's shifting away from STAR onto everybody else. That's got to be picked up someplace. And that would accumulate over time as well, so in five years, you're looking at $134 for enhanced and $66 for basic when it compounds on itself between what would be allowable to be grown over those five years and what if you kept it at cap. Some homeowners would notice a substantially higher tax bill when they moved into their new house. It's very obvious on your bill right now that you have that line that says your credit, you see it coming off. This would have a major impact on the lower-income homeowners because STAR is a greater percentage of the assessed value and those certainties, you know, using our numbers that roughly $600 means more on a $100,000 house than it does to a $400,000 house. So that, it does have a major impact there. In essence, taxpayers are loaning the money to the state in the time between the first tax bills coming out in September to when the savings credit would hit in February when you go to file your taxes. It's hard to believe this will be a one-to-one dollar value for the homeowner. That $1,285 for a person with enhanced in Webster, could you expect then when you went and filed your taxes that you're going to get $1,285 back? Very hard to determine that right now. In theory, that's the way it's going to happen, but you never know.
So when is this proposal take place?
Oh, with the adoption of the state budget, if this goes through.
So it would take place in...
It would start...
September.
That's my understanding.
So anybody who wants to buy a house right now should do it today?
Hurry up and see if you get your closing, get your closing moved up.
Yeah, wow.
And this could substantially hamper the housing market.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people will in essence be afraid to move and for, they don't want to lose it. And for a district, Webster that has housing development and housing tracks going up, this could put the brakes on a lot of housing growth in the district. The other, the other point I want to make is a typical retiree is generally not paying state income tax if they're just relying on social security, so it's something they're not used to even doing, filing state taxes. So that'd be a change for some of our older members in the community. That will definitely be a mind, a mind change, a thought process change, that's something they might have to do now to actually file to get that credit. So just facts about STAR for the district. It accounts for 14 percent of all the valuation in the district, $577 million. Over time, if this goes through, that will be shifted back onto the rolls as properties go off STAR. So for everyone getting, getting sold, that's going to just whittle away and shift back. STAR accounts for 13.8 percent of our total levy, so using our levy of $93,960,254 this year, 12,009 of that is paid for by STAR. And the 81 million that's left over is what's taxable value for the district. In essence, what this would do, if we cap it, it shifts every year roughly one-half of 1 percent back onto the locality. And there is possibility this could affect us quicker than a lot of other districts due to the housing turnover, new housing in our district. If we take a quick break there, or any questions, anything clarification?
This could have significant impact on some of these senior ones that are looking out too.
Yes.
People moving in, they lose it somewhere else in the county or even in Webster if they close that for September.
Right. Mike?
Pretty good.
In terms of your predictions, how did you, refresh my memory on what you said about anticipating growth for next year? You're assuming pretty much the same with the exception, I'm sure, of Penfield because that was such an anomaly.
I'm not assuming the same. What I've tried to do is see which statistical figure would be the best indicator of what's going to happen, using the five to 10 and a repeat of last year. I'm pretty sure we could throw out the 25-year averages. I looked at those first to see what those looked like because, you know, my statistical would be like, oh, over a longer period of time, it's, yeah, it's a smoothing and take out the anomalies, looking at the median to take out anomalies as well, but knowing what's happened, having lived here over that time, is that that's more of an exponential curve over that 25 years as far as growth, and you can see that in some, in between some of the years, especially in the 90s. So those were really were good indicators of where we're going to be next year. And that's why I shortened it down to the five and the 10-year frames, because that really is more predictive right now of what's going to happen in the district than a longer period of time.
We're just guessing.
Right now, the best we could do is go with those.
An educated guess.
An educated guess.
And we don't even know what the margin error is.
So our best guess at this point, on the same growth rate, true value, the average home in Webster's tax rate, taxes would increase about $50, but if there's no STAR, if they sell their house, it would be more than $50. It would be 100, it would be 50 plus the, let's say they're enhanced, so it's going to be 126 plus the 50, so they're $170 more.
Correct, if the STAR changes happen.
Okay. Okay, I think I got those facts there.
And there, to be honest with you, we, a lot of the other budget discussion things have overshadowed the STAR topic, and it's not one that, there's a lot of information that's readily available, what the exact plan is for it.
That's the fine print.
Exactly, that's exactly what it was. It was buried in the budget documents. You had to tease it out, and there wasn't a lot of definitive answers to how it would be rolled out, you know, does it include this year? We can only assume that if it hit by April 1st, that maybe they'd ask the assessors to go back, or if it's going to be a one-year delay.
And you're not sure whether it's a credit or a deduction, would you make a big difference?
Yes.
That would make a significant difference as well.
And it's just complicated, you know, once, go ahead, Mike.
No, no, I, so my understanding is, is that we have no idea when the numbers are going to be released, but don't we have to have something in place by March 31st? Is there a timeline for us?
Mid-April.
Mid-April.
We're supposed to adapt the budget on the night.
File your documents by the end of March.
By the end of March, we should.
By March 1st, we had to file a tax levy limit with the Comptroller. We are allowed up until we file the property tax report card to go and adjust that through the Comptroller's website in case any changes are made.
Surprise the real estate market. Coalition is not publicizing this.
I, this was in the budget that came out, this was buried in there. So unless you were really looking for it, it was going to be very difficult to find.
Hypothetical, as long as we're talking a few hypotheticals here. What happens if the Senate gets their way and the GEA is eliminated? What does that do to Webster?
That would be $6.3 million coming back to the district in 1516, in the GEA alone. Then offset the half a million dollars of expense-based aids we're going to lose, so we'd not...
So five more.
Five, yeah.
Okay. Then everything gets STAR, we start over.
Any other questions? All right. Do you guys want to take a break or do you want to just keep going? Keep going? It's only been a half hour.
Let's do it.
All right. So now we're going to move on to curriculum research and professional development. Who's got that?
I did. I just, we still used, as, you know, as a refresher from the first workshop, we still used a zero and needs-based budget approach for these parts of the budget. We went into the development of this year's budget, I guess, with the best way to say it is some optimism. You know, there was some hope going into this budget season that, you know, there's a real good feeling around, you know, you talked to our elected officials that we're going to get rid of the GEA. There was this renewed sense that, you know, think we could start doing some stuff. So we didn't want to lose that, I guess, that energy is part of... So we didn't want to lose that, I guess, that energy as part of our budget process once January hit and we did not get our aid runs. We wanted to keep doing our process as we normally would. And what do we need in Webster to, you know, continue our program, make it better? So I, I just wanted to make sure we, that wasn't lost as we went through the process. We didn't want to put the brakes on it and say, okay, let's wait until we get something and then hurry up and impact and squish everybody in to a two-week period and say, let's, let's work on it now. So for our curriculum research and professional development, a total budget of a little over $2 million. That's a small increase of $100,000. We are adding, looking to add two enrichment TOSSAs on special assignment, $35,000 in additional conference money, $26,000 for some additional evaluation tools and programs. By programs, I mean software programs that could help do some evaluating. We have a small reduction in BOSI's expenditures in this area and $46,000 in contractual seller increases. That includes the TOSA positions and some breakage from the 14, 15 budget.
Would the enrichment teachers be elementary?
Yeah.
Say on special assignment, does that mean they're not doing enrichment or they have some other assignment to do?
That's the term that we use for their enrichment specialist, that's what we code them for.
Right.
As if they're a teacher on a special assignment because they're not a classroom teacher.
Is that how they were coded before?
Yep, exactly the same.
So just the same?
Yeah, that's always been the same. It's probably the first time we put it in the slot.
Right.
That's how we always said.
Two.
Two, two enrichment.
We'd then be at four?
Four, correct.
Do we have any idea how we distribute them through the elementary schools?
Those are the conversations that we're having right now and they're good. They're, they're actually great conversations that we're talking with the enrichment specialist. We're getting feedback from the principals, from teachers, and certainly conversations that I know you guys have had with Mr. Lieutenant Gavina. And so, yep, we're, we're going to, if we get them, then we'll be able to have had those conversations and move forward with great fun.
Thank you.
A lot of the things, you know, we're going to be discussing today, you'll see, thanks to Brian and Shelley, help with a historical perspective for me and going back and looking at documents, a lot of things we're, we're trying to do are just really bringing back some of the things that have been lost. That's been a main focus through this budget process is trying to bring back and enhance some of those things that have been trimmed over the past five to six years.
Can I ask you a question about the additional evaluation tools and programs? I heard Ryan say that was mostly software. Could you give me an example of what that might be?
Part of that money also is for our K2 resource that we're in the middle of working on, are we identifying what that resource is going to be? And so now we're working with our teachers and we're going to do.
So we're talking about K2.
Exactly, yep, that's what someone is saying.
Would those tools be purchased through BOSI's and aid them?
We'll always try to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they will.
And just for people that are listening, you referred to breakage from the 14th, 15th budget. You're really talking about the difference in salaries for outgoing.
Outgoing and incoming.
And the difference in hiring. So do you have a sense of, besides the two enrichment specialists, how many positions? Are there new positions being added in addition to the two enrichment specialists or is that strictly, you know, breakage?
It's strictly adding them and taking the, subtracting them.
Does it reflect any changes in staffing, at least at this point?
Well, just the two, those two, those two, yes.
Again, just for question.
Next, special education, total budget of $17,431,230. That's an increase of a little over $1.8 million. Huge bulk of that right now is the addition of 11 BOSI's placements going into 15, 16. Eight of those came in unexpectedly through, through this year, so we're now planning for them. We plan for that, not to the extent of having eight come in during the year, but we do have contingencies to, to help us. But planning for 11, raising our number from 57 placements that were budgeted for last year to 68 for this year. Well, I mean last year, I mean this current year. Mentally, I'm already in 15, 16.
And that would be like a center-based program if our host was district-based program? Could be called, could be, could be district-based or it could be a center-based BOSI's program.
Those new placements will be about 825,000. And an additional 60 is really just part of that cost is another 60 for just the BOSI's program inflation costs. Many of these programs are ranging the gamut from a 5% to 10% increase on the tuition costs for the students. In essence, BOSI has been under the same pressures that every district has because their personnel costs are based. And so they're, you know, they have the same healthcare stressors, same pension stressors that we have had, and that's directly related to a lot of their costs. And these programs are really people-driven and human resources-driven, so that's where the cost of the programs will go up because of that. I wanted to point out, $102,581 of these costs will, are shifted from other areas like I have mentioned before, coming from the business administration, how that had gone down as I previously said, some, and that amount is coming here for pretty much IEP direct software program, which was in business before, is now being shifted over here.
So it's a wash?
Yes, in essence, that cost is a wash, but it shows as an increase to special education.
But decrease a lot.
Decrease, yep. And then we have an increase just shy of 850,000 to comply with mandates, audit recommendations, and our commitment to the ICT model. We are looking at the additional CSE chair, additional behavior specialist, 4.0 FTE increase, the salaries projected for the existing staff at current contractual rates, 4.0 for teaching assistance and 2.0 for teachers aides increase across the program. And then an additional $45,000 for increased tuition expenses to other districts. Mainly, these are costs for students with special needs who have entered foster care while in our district, but now go to another district. We are required to financially support those kids in the other district, could range anywhere, depending on what grade level they are, from $22,000 to $30,000. This has been a budget area where we've seen tremendous pressure and uptick. We're just trying to raise that to a level to, to give us some more flexibility.
Is this where the changes to the ESSL student requirements are?
No, as, the ESSL requirements are part of regular education.
Okay, so you have that somewhere else, okay.
Yes, that is some.
That unfunded mandate.
Yes, that unfunded mandate is in the instructional portion of the budget.
Yes.
The teaching assistants and teaching aides, do we know where they're projected for? Is it more elementary, more secondary? Is it math?
It's actually to support the CDOs credential, the career development skills credential, and also to support some of the ICT classes. So secondary and elementary, actually.
So it's both?
Right.
And the four FTE increase, are we adding four specialized teachers?
Yes. Again, that would be to support the ICT class or? That's correct. One would be for the 12-1-4, we're shifting or it's going to be moving to the high school as we continue with that feeder pattern of 12-1-4.
So it's just moving forward?
That's correct, right. Our kids are aging up to, to high school now, so we need that FTE and the other for our ICT classrooms and support. Now, I know there was not one in grade five last year. You're adding that this year? Correct. So any other additions? Fourth grade. Fourth grade, so we'll have two ICT classrooms in fourth grade? And then any other classrooms being a one-on-eight? I know last year some were, some of the 15 to one-to-ones were replaced with ICT. Is that what this is again this year or we're just adding ICT? We're just adding ICT.
And the 12.4?
And the 12.4, yeah.
It's okay. Any other questions?
Our pupil personnel services, total budget of a little over $7 million, increase of $303,000. Large chunk of that is actually our occupational education costs. That tuition through BOSI's has increased above their, their normal inflation rate. It's a, you know, it's, we pay a tuition, I guess is the best way to say it, to BOSI's per student, and that has gone up $53,000 on the entire bunch of students that go there. Then our contractual increases, this is really just our salaries for all our counselors, our attendants, our social workers, our psychologists, and our nurses. The one addition we would like to do to kind of help support the special education program in a way would be to use some cheaper labor through psych interns that we could get from local colleges. You pay them a shortened stipend, that would tremendously help the, the program as well. Additional supplies for the goal program. And one of the things you'll see from here is previously you've seen BOSI's costs here for evaluation. That had been shifted to special education as well out of this, this area. Those were for evaluation costs. Anything BOSI's did for evaluation purposes was counted as underneath psychologists. That's been rolled into special education.
Question on the psych interns. If they're from a local college, would they be with us for the our whole school year or their school year?
Pretty much our whole school year. And I'm assuming that two is an FTE that could actually be six students that resolve in a two if their timeframe changes, for example. Or are you anticipating those interns would be the very same individuals for the whole course of the year? So you're not, that's not really an issue as much as it is. We're looking for consistency. Correct.
Next up would be instructional technology, a total budget of $4.6 million. That's an increase of 2.1. A lot of this could be placeholders. I think that's the best way to describe some of these positions right now because of the smart bond and not knowing about that, what we would need to do to support it. So as meeting with Mr. Austin and Mr. Zimmer of what it would take to kind of support the money that we're getting and really roll it out and do some stuff, we're looking at additional 3.0 FTE to support that smart bond act money. Two for instructional support and one for a more technical support, you know, your backroom operations kind of person in the, 2.0 for people being out with teachers and with staff to show them how to use whatever it is we might be getting from smart bond act money and what would happen there.
But we can't use smart goal money or smart bond to pay salaries at this point?
Most 100% sure of that. We don't know definitively, but all signs, everybody I've asked at every level has said probably not. There was a glimmer of hope when somebody, one of the groups, I can't remember off the top of my head, released and to support the professional development. And I found, I found it in state aid planning set, no, not, you can't take that and run with it because that, that was something that we have discussed as well.
Let me ask you this question. In, in the previous slide, you mentioned using psych interns, and I've heard Tom mention this before, using interns from RIT and whatever, have we, is that feasible? I mean, is it?
Yeah, I mean, it's worth looking at. Brian and I have had a conversation about doing something a little different with our student population here. We might not be able to roll this out for 15, 16, but we want to lay the groundwork of having the, our, our upper-level juniors and seniors actually become employees of the district and working after-school hours, you know, three to five, and doing our help tickets at every building, not tying up our network people or our network support to say, my keyboard isn't broken, using them to, to use that and get some good experience.
With that idea, they might even be able to get some college credit.
That, and that's the next step. There is a pro, a pathway, a program that you could do during the day. We're working through the details on that, that'll allow the kids, you know, say if they got, you know, a junior with a study hall, you know, that can in essence turn into a credit-bearing course if they have somebody in the building that they can work under and says, okay, for the next 15 minutes, you're going around, I got, I need you to switch this out, switch that, do this, you know, bring this laptop back because it needs to be sent out, you know, those, those little things that tie up some of our more senior help right now. Yeah, so that, we are looking to dedicate funds towards that to the $250,000. It also gives the kids a great opportunity because they'd be joining the retirement system right away since they'd be working for the district if that's one of their long-term goals and a great experience for them. So it's something we're building towards. But, you know, that, that 3.0 FTE, you know, if, if state aid doesn't work out the way we, we want it to be, there is an area where we, you know, it's something great that we could do, but, you know, we could hold off and do it at another, another time.
On that 3.0 FTE, it's only covered by the bond for a certain amount of time that has to be absorbed by the district in other ways.
Right, even if, yeah, that is true. Even if we could somehow use the bond act money for salaries, eventually it's, it's going to be gone or grant or we incorporate those people into the general fund budget anyways.
Last night at the Monroe County School Board Presidents' Meeting, people were sharing that they heard, I think it was on the trip in Albany, that the guidelines would be out by the end of this month.
Because state aid was purely continuing to be out by?
By the end of March?
By the end of March.
That's exciting.
We shall see. We shall see.
Well, we're also looking at a lot of other things.
Yes.
But not basically that.
Okay.
So our BOSI's cost increase are going up significant here. This is also due to a shift from that business administration. A lot of our software support, our, our server costs, things like that, were in the business administration, bringing them over here to instructional technology. I also want to go for, through today, a way that we would love to start buying our technology here at the district. We don't have a set plan right now. It's kind of, I hate to use the word afterthought, but it's, it's very last minute. So we're taking a look at changing that way. And this is why, when I go through this, the smart bond act is bad financial planning because there's a mechanism already in place for, for districts to do it. See if we can get this up faster than the last one. So right now, it's a technology lease cycle and I'll see if I can make this a little bit better. Let's make it, let's go smaller. I apologize if you can't see it. On average, we actually end up, when you look in real dollars, spend about $2 million a year in technology purchases, all over the place, what it is and what we're doing. But you could purchase this on a lease cycle through BOSI's. And by this, you mean you take that $2 million and you turn it into six because you make a lease payment, $2 million every year for three years, but you get the $6 million in equipment upfront. So what we're currently spending, we could just redirect and create this, this cycle. So I'm using $2 million as just, it's nice, easy, clean, and it's right about what we've been spending every single year for about the past seven, eight years. So you take that and you upfront it and you get $6 million worth of new stuff. You pay it over three years. Our BOSI's aid rate is 61%. So if we did this hypothetical for 15, 16, more likely going to be pushed out a year because of not knowing what the, the smart bond act could do to help support this. It runs, that $2 million lease is going to give us a little over $1.2 million in aid. So now that following year, you come back up, I could take that 1.2, in essence, you're multiplying it by three, you're getting about $3.6 million in new equipment the second year upfront, you're spreading that lease payment out over three years. So now, fast forward another year, that's going to get you $744,200 in aid off that 1.2 million dollar lease payment. So now in the third year, take that 700, that 744,000 in aid, roll it right back into another lease over three years. thousand in aid, roll it right back into another lease, over three years, that's two point two million in new equipment upfront in the third year. So in three years, we've just bought eleven point eight million dollars worth of technology with two million in seed money that we've already done, and now, in the fourth year, what ends up happening, because the fourth year is really the first year where you're getting, you have all three leases going, you've in essence started that first lease, that first two million is now gone off and said, okay, we're going to redo it, starts again. So you have all three of your leases going and all three of your aids coming in, so that two million dollars you just spent is now actually a net one point five because your aid has increased. It gives you a set definition of what to expect every year, you have a solid plan every three years, so it keeps up with the times, because if you bought tablet X and it is terrible, it's not working out for you, you're only married to it for another two years, and tablet X goes out the door and you insert tablet Y, and hopefully that works better, or newer version, and you test it out. So it gives you the ability to financially do this, it's self-sustaining, and you'll always have the top of the line stuff. Now, the point that we're trying to work through right now, you know, is eleven point eight enough to meet our needs? And it probably is more than enough to meet the needs when we talk about one-to-one computing and one-to-one devices, when you price it out. So in essence, we might even be able to save off the front end that we might not need such a gigantic lease off the front. The thing with this is that we're waiting for is the smart bond act money, because it's over a long time, that financially makes more sense to put into infrastructure, because your cableing, your network and some of your hardware stuff isn't going to be obsolete in three years like a device would be. So it makes sense for us to get that infrastructure solid first and then roll out with with this plan. But we wanted to share it with you guys now, this is the vision of what we're doing, and then with this, those three point O FTEs, just roll in and support this.
So I know Brian has mentioned that there have been many conversations around technology, instructional technology, so those conversations which might at some point evolve into the the strategic planning technology task force, so that's a lot of money in technology, and I just want to make sure those decisions have been well thought out, well articulated, and can be well supported, because it does seem like a lot of money to connect.
Right.
So I I just, you know, and I'm sure that that's part of the conversation.
Is all that money needed for giving our students the best as far as learning the the technology market or learning what they need to learn in technology? I guess every time I, I think it's really good math, I like what you're doing there, but why is it as a district we always have to try to continuously spend as much as we can to do things?
Well, the, we're not spending a dollar more than what we already do.
Okay.
That, it's just changing the philosophy and the way we do it, it's changing that upfront in defining it, that we're, you know, that this is, that's the benefit.
Okay, so, can you explain that to me again then? Because I see eleven point eight million, and we're only spending two million a year still.
Yep, because we get the entire amount of the lease upfront, but our year to year is still the same. So, so for the first, we're going to, if we did this next year, you know, budget passes, this is included, technology smart bond act money comes out, we could do everything, perfect world scenario.
Mm-hmm.
July one, we order six million dollars worth of new equipment to get ready to hit the hit the streets, September one, when kids come back. But Bosse's on our bill is for two million.
So we get two, two mil, six million dollars in goods for two million?
Right, because we're paying two million every single year.
For that six million?
For three years, yes.
Three years, but then the next year, we're starting it over again, right?
Right, so then you could start another one, use, because you have a defined way of doing it now, you're using the aid, the Bosse's aid that's generated off that first lease payment to to seed the second lease.
And that's another six million?
And then that that is three point six million.
Three point six?
Yeah.
And then the third year is another two?
Third year is two point two, because you're using then that aid generated off that second lease payment to seed your third year. So that's where you get the eleven point eight, because you're getting it all upfront.
Going forward, it's always two million plus.
To seed money.
To seed money.
Plus the received, right. So the most you'd you'd ever spend in that third year is the three point nine.
And the reimbursements to the?
And then, yeah, and then here's your aid, the fourth year, your aid comes to two point four, so that's why I say when you use in that fourth year, you're originally, we're spending two, but by the fourth year, if you complete this, the really, the net cost to the district is is one point five.
But still, it's taxpayers' dollars somewhere in the state that's paying for it.
Yes.
Well, it's, yeah, it's still.
Am I right? I mean, it might be savings for our district, but somewhere, some money in the state, some taxpayer money, is still paying for it.
I think the best way to say it, it's all of our money, it's all of our state.
It's real money, you know? You're not going to spend, you're not, you know what I'm saying? Is that hard to understand that even though we're getting this, this, you know, we're paying two millions upfront and we're getting reimbursed, the reimbursement's money from somewhere, it's from some tax money from the state, right?
It's from us, all of us.
All of it.
All of it, it's, yeah, it's in essence, New York State withholding income taxes coming back to you, that that's the pot of money it's coming from.
Brian, would it be fair to say that what you're proposing here is not unlike how we purchase our buses?
It it's it's a similar concept.
So it's a replacement cycle?
It's a replacement cycle that's more sustainable than what we have, more predictable than what we have been doing.
Okay. So when can we expect to see a technology plan?
Well, I would say that we're going to be forming that committee, like, getting that committee back together, because Anne, I should talk about earlier, that was part of our strategic planning committee a few years ago, we're going to reconvene that committee, Brian and Jim are going to lead that work, and I would say that if this was to go through and our budget was to go through, we'd be doing that the last couple of months of this school year and right into the beginning of next school year.
Okay.
Where we would have that going forward, absolutely. And most of next school year, we would be working on it to come back, probably in the springtime, a year from now, we'll present that to you.
Okay, so you, so anything that you would be doing in the interim would just be kind of sustaining, and then you'd be waiting to unfold the technology plan, it would include all the components that?
Yeah, we've had many conversations about this, and you're right, we absolutely want to be very thoughtful in the way we do this, and it's important, I mean, it's important for our kids, because Mike, I think you said it a minute ago, and it's about our kids' future.
Yeah.
And what we're preparing them for, and what they are exposed to now, what they're using, Brian's right, I mean, technology continues to change at an exponential rate, and it's important for us to do our due diligence for our kids' sake. And so we are, and there's some things that I think with this plan, it allows us to better position ourselves, but we know that teachers have to be a huge part of this, and their professional development is incredibly important, we don't want to just throw technology money into kids, or technol, uh, things into kids' hands just just to say that we're doing it. It's absolutely going to be centered upon the learning and the instruction going forward for our kids, but that is changing too, and it's important for us to stay up, like Brian said earlier, up with the times for our kids' sake, where we're sending it.
It's just so much money and so much, so many decisions, it's just, it's hard to get wrapped around.
It is, but like Brian said earlier to Anne, just remember, this is actually the same amount of money we've been sending year after year after year, and I'm not sure we've been, we've always, yeah, using it as wisely with the, with this good plan, I mean, a big chunk, when we did the technology committee earlier, was to get wireless, and think about what we've done now, now that we are wireless, there's a lot further we can go with with technology, but we have to have a plan financially in order for us to be able to develop a solid learning plan going forward with with our staff.
Well, I'm certainly very pleased to see that professional development's a big part of that, because unless our teachers are trained appropriately, and here is the background support, it's, so that's really important and valuable, and then the other thing is, if I remember correctly, our smart bond money is around four million?
Yes, a little over.
And is it, and what I don't remember, is it like in one year or is it spread over?
We don't know.
So that's one of the things we don't know, so it's possible that maybe a portion of that first initial two million seed money could actually come from that path too.
Unfortunately, that's one I do know, they're not going to allow us to take that smart bond money, go buy equipment at Bosse's and then give Bosse's aid.
Well, that does make sense, okay.
Right. In an ideal world, that would be great, but unfortunately, that one is expressed already in in some of the minimal guidance we have gotten, that is one thing we would not be able to do.
Doesn't mean it won't change.
Yeah, there's rumblings about everything, yeah.
It is a lot to process.
So, and I know Brian, Zimmer, if you don't mind, I was putting you on the spot, you've been thinking about this and setting up frameworks and, you know, all the questions that need to be answered, and you've been, you've really started the work on this already, right?
Yeah, one of the things we're trying to do is just think, like Brian, Brian said initially, is how do we make this a sustainable approach over time, because our replacement cycle right now is not existent. And so how do we, how do we continue to think about what's the best equitable access for all our kids in the district to be informed, so what we're, what we're trying to do is really try what the teachers need to do at first, before we even think about where our own buses are. Because we want to make sure that one of those devices are in the kids' hands, that they're, that they're being maximized, and hopefully they'll be able to sell, okay, I might work with some of them after that. We want to, we want to make that experience equitable across for all kids, I don't want it to be just in a pocket, and I'm going to do that in another, but just I would make it so consistent, so if a teacher wants to say, okay, now we're going to do some research, with the seat in there, and I have a laptop right away, and I have the exponential learning experience in the floor, and one of the, one of the really seven things about this for me is, this puts it in a three-year chunk, so during that three-year chunk, our strategic planning committee of the technology side, as well as the teacher community that are informing, with the parents and all the people, we can constantly say, let's say I'll reach into this three years, now I'll go to the next three, so we're going to have this continued cycle with three-year goal, nine-year, and a clear, clear programmatic approach going forward, which we haven't had at this point, so it's something to see a little bit of control of that.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm, I'm for technology, I'm not against it, I'm just against spending lots of money, all right, that's that's the only thing, I'm trying to figure this out, we haven't had a plan in the past, now we got this plan, I just want to make sure the plan is what we want, that we, it's not too much or it's not too little, that it's where it needs to be, that's that's kind of looking at, and I like your number, I like the way that works, but, you know, the money's coming somewhere and just want to make sure we're not overdoing it. I think Mike, you know, at the conference, I mean, the one-on-one devices is, next meeting, we're going to hear about it.
Next meeting, you'll report on that.
Yep, so.
Very good, and I think one of the things to think about too is because I've understood some financial strain for the last several years, and I think that is an area as a district that we've had to really trim, and I think that, like Brian said before, this type of a plan would just put us in in line, say this is our, this, we're setting this much aside going forward and build it right into the budget, which hasn't been something we've done in the last four or five years, it's ever been flowing, gone up and down a little bit, it's been all around two one, two million dollars, but some years it's a little bit less than that because of where we were financially as an entire state, so that's a big part of this.
So once we get this going, I mean, it's ever, it's ever going, I mean, basically it's in place and it's 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 just, it's going to be like a workhorse, it's just over and over and over and over and over.
And the str, and the strategic plan, the portion, the technology portion will continue to be updated regularly.
Oh, good, okay.
And that's not to say that there hasn't been planning, it's just they're making sure all the Ts are crossed and all the Is and looking at student outcomes and.
Right, and and one of the things, because we we've all had the discussions together, and I'm probably a little bit different of a, you know, a business guy that's involved in this a little bit more, because I've I've done this before and have a vested interest in it, it's, you know, probably when I first started, I I wanted to do this right away, it's like, oh, I I saw the way we've been doing it, I wanted to change it like yesterday, could ask Brian Zimmer, but, you know, when, we thought at the time we might be able to mirror with the smart bond act and and piggyback off of each other, and that's why, you know, we're, it's kind of slowed down a little bit on the conversation, it, you know, it has forced us to be a little bit more thoughtful about it, but we want to see if, how we could tie the two together as best, using one for the the backup, because nothing will make a one-to-one situation fail more than, because, you know, I lived it, when, in your classroom, you have thirty devices going for your for your students, and your room, because for some reason, nothing's coming up, it's not working, every other classroom in that wing in the hallway could be working, but you get that one room that something maybe not be right, and it, the perception is, is, well, then the whole thing's a failure, and we don't want that to happen.
You know, it's not necessarily talking always one-to-one, like, yesterday, we saw the Young Entrepreneur Academy, and there was one particular group that if they had access to a three D printer, they could have produced their own product, and, you know, we have to also consider what we're doing with our engineering courses and all that stuff, so this is, has a lot of possibilities, not just one-on-one, I mean.
Right, there, and the early indications from some of the quotes and things that we're looking at is that there would be room, room to build for all those specific kind of departmental areas for their unique needs, you know, wouldn't have to be all, you know, used to Google Chromebooks, because sometimes those are greatest for certain courses, you know, inside that lease, you could have smaller pockets of things, because you know you're going to need, you know, Macs for this class.
An English class is something different than a math class.
Right, exactly, and it's all, you know, that's all part of the bigger picture, there's little pieces in it, so you know, you're turning those over as well.
And then Mike just said, one of the things we're working on is on a bigger basis that we're going to look at the top-of-the-line stuff that we are a part of, and project we're doing, so we're trying to evolve that, so it's not a one, one voice, like Brian said, it's a, what's going to work best for that experience, when the people's kids are ready for college, they're ready, they've had all those opportunities to experience what's going to work for them in that field, and we're still generating this, and working with all the criteria, and get the best possible things we can to land on, on one side of the, of their.
All right, any more questions on this part?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Everything over.
The second largest chunk of our budget after benefits is our instruction and supervision portion of the budget, because that's where everybody is, that's our teaching staff, that's our principals, that's where the the bulk of our work is. So that's a total of fifty-one million, five hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars, supervision salaries, we have a little breakage there from a salary that was carried into fourteen, fifteen, that will no longer need to be carried in fifteen, sixteen, so overall, we're seeing a small reduction in the supervision salaries. But instructionally, we'd like, this is where the two point O ESL positions are coming in, we'd like to add that, additional FTE at the elementary for kindergarten class size cap, the one point O FTE for a school resource officer, we would like to do, you also see a fifty thousand dollar addition in this area due to projected Title I grant cuts, sequestration is the the common name for that, expecting our Title I grant to be reduced a little bit more going forward. And just general, the salary projections for all existing staff at the current contractual rate across the board going forward.
The school resource officer, I know we touched on that before, was that, are we talking about police officers for Webster?
Yes, it would be a joint venture with the town.
Okay. So it's one full-time equivalent at half salary?
Well, however, the agreement would shake out depending on how much that officer would be assigned to us, generally could be anywhere from a half to a whole.
So I wasn't sure if we were going to have something with the town, it's still the county, but that was being discussed too, fifty percent of the time it could be a county officer, it's still with that too, if it's been settled, it's still Webster, so, that's fine, thank you.
Just some other things in the instructional budget. Just some other things in the instructional, uh, budget, small textbook increase of $20,000. Our BOSI's instructional services, just wanted to highlight that, that's a total of $850,000 of this, of this budget, a lot of that is our student management services, our test scoring costs that we have, our data warehousing costs. A small increase to the library and AV support, just contractual salary increases. A little addition for music, and actually, this, um, is an add on the instructional side, but it's offset by a reduction on the co-curricular, um, for band uniforms. $45,000 for equipment replacement, that we've quoted, some of the piano needs to be replaced at Thomas', and it's substantially, uh, more costly, I think, than originally expected, so it's why the increase there. I continue to support Project Lead the Way, um, and a request for additional money for elementary science kits through BOSI's to, to expand those programs, uh, would be in addition to the budget. Just trying to, uh, always get, get back some of those things that we've lost and been, been missing, is really the, uh, the theme there.
The band uniform, and is that after their fundraising effort, or are we just buying?
That is part of the co-curricular budget, uh, for this current year.
Okay. Because in the, in the past, the board or the school district would supplement?
I'm not sure if it's for the, the full cost of the uniforms, I'd have to check on that, but that, we're not budgeting for that expense for 1516, and in essence, shifting those costs over to help support this increase in musical equipment. So this is just a review slide for what we presented during, uh, the first portion, the first workshop, and earlier in the month, uh, for everybody's reference, to see where we were at. Now, add it to the areas we covered this evening, to see where our budget is at. Our total preliminary budget would be 159,503,823 dollars. It's a l-, increase of a little over $7 million, or a 4.65% increase. What would we need to make this budget work? Going to our cap at 4% would give us the extra 3,758,000. Very important to note that even if we go at our, our levy limit of 4%, uh, we're staying within our cap, and it makes the district tax-free compliant, and the residents would still qualify for the rebate come fall. I think that, we don't want to lose sight of that, that we're, uh, whatever we go out at, will, is still rebate, qualify under tax freeze. We are on target, uh, as an update for that. Easter on the way, is taking the lead, um, for all the Monroe County districts, to be the lead district in submitting our plan by June 1. So that is, we are piggybacking on that, so we will be compliant, showing the savings, the 1% savings to be tax-free eligible, what the district is doing. We are saving in the healthcare area, twofold. The first is, we are exploring, um, switching to a Article 47, which will help us avoid the Affordable Care Act tax on the consortium we are part of, so that will help us in itself get 99% of the way to being tax-free compliant. The other percent, we're making up through what our rates are for healthcare, what we pay as a district for the premiums, compare it to that same plan, what it would be out in the marketplace. And there is about a $25 million difference between the costs for the consortium, so we're using that as savings as well. So we should be able to hit that target very easily, um, and that would be the final piece, to be compliant for every, uh, everybody to get a rebate come fall. State aid, half the gap elimination restored, and an increase in foundation aid equal to last year, so the same amount, using the same kind of philosophy, you know, you got a little back on the GEA, and you get a little in foundation, in essence, using the same type of philosophy that's been happening, the same pattern, predicting that forward to make happening. Reserves, continuing to use our ERS and unemployment reserve, um, to help, but reducing the amount of the debt service reserve we're using by 400,000. That reserve is the, would be the lowest funded reserve we have, so that would back off that one and help, um, hold on to some monies in there to make this happen. Other revenues, uh, we've just increased our miscellaneous by 25,000 for the aquatic center program, the, uh, enrichment program we're running, also, so, different programs, and more fees to help offset those costs, so our revenues are really not going up that much, and keeping all other revenues remaining flat, pilots and sales tax are being the two big ones there. I wanna touch on one thing with state aid, getting that GEA restored at half, that's also, um, picking up the loss of the expense-based aids. So even though we're getting half the GEA, it's helping to offset the loss in those other areas, um, the transportation aid, the high-cost access aid, or, or some of those areas that I had shown the last time, are still, we're still losing the aid in those expense-based aids, but then we'd have a net gain with half the gap elimination restored.
You're optimistic that we get that, the gap elimination restored at that amount?
I'm, I'm optimistic, I'm still, until I get a projection that says otherwise, I'm, I'm thinking that I, I have a very good feeling about that.
Until we see otherwise.
Until we see otherwise, that, I mean, that's, in essence, what, you know, to make everything we would like to restore and, and, and do, um, you know, and, and bring back to the program, you know, this is what we would need to do, um, if, and adjust accordingly over the next few weeks, um, once we get some hot, uh, some solid state aid numbers.
Hypothetically, if we do not know the gap elimination restoration by April 9th, how do we put a budget out?
Yes.
All right.
I, I would recommend, um, at that time, that we push back to the, to the, have a meeting, I think, which is already scheduled for the 23rd-
Yeah.
-which would be, uh, the day before the, the last possible moment we could, the board could approve the budget.
So what is it, 20 days, or what is it, 20?
April 23rd.
Okay. What's the law, what is the law?
The 24th.
The law, the losses, so it's, is it a certain number of days, a certain number of weeks, what does the law say?
It's, how many days before the budget vote?
Before the vote.
I believe it's 45.
I was gonna say 45.
But that doesn't, no.
But that doesn't equal 45.
That doesn't equal 45.
That's what's throwing me.
45 is stuck in my head about something else.
Yeah.
It might be the, how many days you need to publish the, the vote, that's what-
So we need to check on that to make sure, if we have a special meeting?
Right.
I, I know, the drop, the drop solid date is that 23rd to, to approve the budget, because the property tax report card is in essence due on the 24th, and that's always due 24 hours after the last possible day, um, to adopt the budget. Worst-case scenario would be, we, we'd have to go back to the drawing board and, and not prepare, you know, do worst-case scenario on the revenue side, and, you know, take everything out that we probably wanted to do, and just pay for as-is, as an ongoing, what we have now, just keep that going.
I guess I'm a bit concerned because, um, when I was in Albany this week, I would have said to you to be very comfortable with assuming about a half restoration, because clearly that's the information we were receiving, that, um, there was definitely going to be actually the, the full restoration, but none of us really believed that. However, my bigger concern is now where we are in terms of trying to, um, delay funding until a plan for teacher evaluation is complete. And if you've been reading what I've been reading, there seems to be, to me at least, I won't say likelihood yet, because I do believe people do, do not want to get to that point yet, but if they can't come up with a template for an evaluation that is agreed upon, what I heard, um, Mr. Morale say is, well, you'll get a range, and that range is gonna be awfully difficult, I would think, to build on, so I'm sure you're talking about that, thinking about that, but that's gotta be a concern for everyone, how you think.
Yeah.
So, you're, you're right, I mean, I think as you were all walking in, there was another email sent out that stated that they didn't think, that they thought they were still stick with the April 1, and some of the other rhetoric that was out there, and the rumors were out there, that weren't necessarily true, but it's hard to tell, I mean, it really is, at this point. I think next Tuesday's gonna be a flurry of activity, and, uh, it's gonna be an interesting day.
It's why I'm not going to Florida.
Well, I was gonna say, I think so, don't they have to have it planned by, by Friday? Because they have to have so many days.
Yeah, Saturday.
The bills have to sit, yeah.
And then it's gotta be printed, so it isn't really, I'm not sure, well, maybe it could be Tuesday, being the drop dead date, but-
I think that's a will be, we might hear Monday, but-
I think you're right.
Yeah, I think they have to be printed by midnight on Saturday, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, Easter weekend, and that's it for now. So, the other thing that we did hear is that they are not going to tender with the reimbursement rates, whether or not that is true, and that's still another bargaining chip, which is why I asked what numbers you were using, so it sounds like you are assuming they're going to be-
I'm assuming, because that's what's on the law, and they're running those, and that's what's on the books right now.
Are we reading the same levels as this past year? Do you have, like, a, a memory that tells you exactly what the distance would be, is it like a half a million dollars?
It's, it's probably around $400,000.
That's what I was thinking from the last time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So there's still some-
So we could live with, we can live with half the gap being restored?
If we go.
If we did with something.
Go to 4%.
Go to 4%.
Yeah. So, questions, any more questions?
We don't, I don't have solid information, ask questions now.
Right.
I'm just creating representation of how we got into different areas.
I agree with Tom, right? I don't have anything at this point.
So we know state aid?
Right.
I have a tired desktop full of state aid scenarios.
Any, me, any, my, any mo. I just have two questions, one, so if, regardless of what the scenario is, I assume that the things that you are looking to restore, you prioritize them?
Yes.
So you know, you know, if you get a portion, these are the things you'll pick first, and these, okay.
Absolutely.
And then the, um, so the budget increase of 4.65%, what is the impact on a homeowner? Where is that?
That would be part of, the impact would just be on the, on the levy.
Just under $50, the average.
To the average person?
The average person.
For a $165,000 home?
$169.
$169 is the number we're using, and it's about $50.
That's right.
Per, okay. All right. Wow.
That's what we have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate this, um, you know, I am a little concerned about having to adopt the budget on the 9th without seeing solid numbers before that, you know, so we may have to call an extra meeting.
Yeah.
Just to get everybody comfortable and understanding and-
If it looks, if it looks like that, I will attend the Fairport meeting, BOSI's end, who's the candidates at BOSI's that day?
On the 9th?
On the 9th.
Okay.
So if it doesn't look like we're gonna be adopting the budget, I'll go to that.
Okay. All right.
So what's your candidate?
All right, so I guess that wraps it up. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Ann and Mike, all in favor?
Right.
Thank you very much, everybody, and we appreciate all the effort you put into, um, this presentation, and we're looking-